Thanks, Michael. Chuck, I saw you raised your hand. Would you like to make a comment question?
I think this is terrific that we've gotten a couple of people with terrific competence that are complementary to each other. And Eric and I know from our years on the planning board how terrific Gino is. Gino's terrific, other than being a Georgetown Hoya basketball fan, but we overlook that when we consider town appointments. And Dorothea, your resume is just very impressive. I'm particularly interested in your master's thesis when you were looking at the cost benefit analysis of solar energy in the People's Republic of Cambridge.
People's Republic of Cambridge.
I'm letting you get some of you'll be taking a look at because I know we've had some sort of fits and starts, but I also saw on your resume, you got the Derek Bach Award for undergraduate teaching. That's a very prestigious award.
Thank you, Chuck, for seeing that because for letting everybody know, I have also, in terms of background, I've been teaching when my kids were in elementary and middle school. I taught for Harvard and it was been a kind of like strength of myself to bring in a lot of people, bring along on certain topics. So the Derek Bach Award is given from students to teachers. So I was happy to receive the three times in a row while I was teaching at Harvard.
I don't think senior professors ever get it either. It's just TAs, correct?
I wasn't TA at that time.
Yeah.
And in terms of this thesis, this was an interesting project and to make it not too long, because we could talk about it for ages, but it was about demand charges. So we were, I was working with the town of Cambridge. We were doing a case study with the premise to look at all the roof space that they could have possibly developed into solar and figuring out how much money they would have saved if they had developed solar in terms of reducing demand charges. And it turned out that they could have saved a quarter of the annual cost, which is a big chunk if you think about like you spending $2 million on electricity for these buildings and you could have saved basically $500,000. So that was quite intensive and interesting case study with, in conjunction with MIT. So a lot of spreadsheets to be looked at, lots of medical data.
I have some questions for both you and Gino. Like, do you have any particular grants you're targeting right away? I know we talked about this as trying to get some grants for the town in regards to sustainability. So I was wondering if you have any in mind that you're working on already?
Well, the MVP grant that I just mentioned is the most immediate one. We're also looking at next year's Green Community Application. We would do that. There are others as they come along, we would look at them. There's one available right now for technical assistance that we may, I was talking to Michael about that today, that we may look into further.
Well, thank you. Nice to, I'm glad you're both on board. I'm glad you're getting started on this and we look forward to the work that you're going to be doing.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thanks, Select Board, for your support.
Excellent. All right. I'm going to go back to the previous item on the agenda. It's now after 7:16 so we can start the public hearing with Jen Ziskin from the Heritage. So David, if you could make sure she's unmuted so she can present to us and we can start a discussion.
She's open.
Hi, Jen.
Everybody, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. It's so good to see all these faces. I miss everyone so much. As you see, my virtual background is the Heritage Pub. I am home now. So we are going in front of you today because we want to do an alteration of premises on our liquor license and we want to do it in, you know, because of what is going on right now and basically to try to figure out, you know, what's going to happen when we are allowed to reopen, whenever that may be. So we're doing this in preparation for the reopen, which we truly hope will happen. I also really want to thank everyone for their support. Everyone has been so amazing with Takeout and supporting all our virtual events and all of the fun things that we've been trying to do to keep positive during this really difficult time as well. So I wanted to start with that and thank you actually for that. Thank you so much. So basically, this is something that I just started thinking of because our current liquor license talks about, you know, it's 22,000. It's basically based on the square footage of the restaurant and the patio, the patio that's directly behind Heritage. And in order to be allowed to extend the patio and allow for more social distancing, which we've seen with all these other countries that are starting to open up and states that are starting to open up, social distancing is really the key. And we feel so fortunate at Heritage to have so much space inside. So even thinking about, you know, if we're just opening inside, we could open up all of the rooms that we have and have people at the distance that a lot of these guidelines are dictating. So, but because God willing, we can open this summer and, you know, we want to have the extensive use of the patio and of the lawn, it would be important to be able to extend the patio out onto the lawn and be able to serve alcohol as well. So that's basically what this is all about, is just an alteration of our liquor license so we can then serve alcohol on the lawn. Kind of the proposal is, it's so hard because I guess I could, I mean, I don't know, the selectmen do have the first map, which I don't know that, you're not going to be able to see it with my virtual background anyway, but their patio itself is 2,400 square feet. We're proposing to kind of push that out another approximation of 4,800 square feet, which would go out onto the lawn and basically be two more patios. So kind of an addition of maybe having, what we're thinking is having picnic tables out there on the lawn that we could have spread out at a good amount of distance to extend service outside. And that's kind of the gist of it. The reason behind it is to have more distancing outside and we can't do that legally without extending our liquor license to include the lawn in addition to the patio.
Thanks, Jen. I have one question for you. I know one of the regulations is I think if you're serving alcohol outside, it has to be a fenced in area.
Um, I saw that it just has to be like, there has to be some sort of division from the public area to the actual restaurant itself. And because there's, there's certain property lines and we have a fence, you know, on the side of where the parking lot is and then a stone wall on the side of the street that it is like sort of defined.
It's considered separate. Okay. I just wanted to double check on, that was the one thing that I saw in the regulations that I wanted to ask because I think, I mean, I think it makes sense. Paul, go ahead.
Just a few comments and questions. First, I commend you for the idea of social distancing upon reopening. That's going to be the trend across the state and across the nation. And I think you're ahead of the curve on that. So I congratulate you for that. You had a reference in there to a tent. And so I'm assuming that the tent is only for the big events, but not for everyday use? Or is it going to be tented all the time for this new patio?
In my perfect world, it would be tented all the time. You know, I, I don't think that'll be a financial option that we'll have unfortunately because we have no money, especially now. Takeout only goes so far, but I think that that would be ideal if we could tent it. But no, it's basically just the space on the lawn and then we'll tent it for events. And if we can figure out a way to do more of a permanent tent, that would be, that would be great. I'm not sure if we'll be able to do that though.
Jeff, go ahead. I saw your hand up.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. I'm thinking this probably has to get reviewed by the Board of Health eventually also because I'm on the coronavirus team, as you know, also. So we're talking about all kinds of considerations with how you could adapt, you know, things like farm pond and stores and all kinds of things. So in terms of social distancing and setups for that, I'm quite sure that the Board of Health would need to review it to guide, to guide us on how to approach it too. Because you know, the restaurant in China that was one of the starting points, they found that the contagion was spread by the HVAC system, by the airflow through the restaurant. They could trace the pattern of the airflow and those were the patients that got it. So while this will be outdoors, that sounds positive, but if there was like a door in the tent where all the wind went through, there may be some considerations and we know that you want to make it safe for everyone also. The other thing that we'll have to talk to the Board of Health about is I think that your septic permit is based on a number of seats. And I know there was a talk, you know better than I do, a couple of years ago where, you know, if you were going to have outdoor events, you had to somehow not necessarily take seats outside, but not use seats inside so you didn't exceed the total capacity of the septic system, which for whatever reason is based on number of seats. So you just need to, I don't think it would be an obstacle, you just, and obviously if you're physical distancing, you're probably going to have way less people than you want anyway, but you'll need to find a way to cause that to compare to your septic permitting for a number of seats also.
Jen, go ahead. I saw your hand up if you want to respond to.
No, definitely. Because I think these are very valid points and definitely I think as far as us reopening, all of these considerations are going to be, going to have to happen. I mean, we've already started, there's this one restaurant in Hong Kong that wrote this incredible plan of reopening that all the restaurateurs are circulating. And I already have people rewriting, rewriting that plan and making it fit for us at both Heritage and Lamora because this is all we're thinking about 24/7 is reopening. We have no idea when that's going to happen, but that's all we can think about. This is totally separate from, I think, those different guidelines because this is just, God willing, we can reopen. We want to have as much space to reopen in and we want to do it. I mean, I'm a real, and I know I've said this before at selectman meetings, I'm a rule follower and I just want it to be, you know, follow all the rules. So I can spread out my tables outside for sure, but I want to make it, you know, I would like to make it so it's completely following the guidelines of just pre-COVID, pre all of this. Like if we want to have these different like regular patio seating out on the lawn, we need to have the correct liquor license. But if we're not talking about expanding our seating capacity, we have, I think it's 135, that's mandated by the septic. If we want to have more than 135, like for the Brew Fest, we have porta potties and we have to have porta potties because we can't, you know, the septic system can't accommodate that. Um, I did actually on this license, I did realize that the occupancy number for Heritage is 222, but the seating capacity is 135. So Select Board, I do need to just adjust that on this form because we're not looking to change anything as far as occupancy or seating capacity. We just want to give as much space to that capacity as possible.
I know, I support that.
Just like Jeff, Eric's had his, Jeff, Eric's had his hand up for a little bit. Let him have a chance.
Yep.
Just to compound on top of that, I know Jeff, you talked about that study and I've been looking at this a little bit and I'm sure experts greater than me can look at it. But I mean, in the last week to 10 days, I've been seeing numerous studies and talked about how the transmissions are largely indoor oriented. And those one shiny study looked at 300 different transmissions and over the 300 transmissions of the disease, only one was actually done in outdoor environment. Now you can, I'm not attempting to analyze each study, but I got to think, taking seats indoors and putting them outdoors is going to be a good thing in a circumstance. Whereas when most restaurants open up and the governor is going to let the restaurants open up, I think sooner than we think, then, um, you know, to actually have this, have the Heritage go into this model, it's going to be a far more advantage, I think, the other restaurants have. And if this is as simple as expanding the liquor license area into the lawn, seems almost like a no brainer to me.
Yeah, I agree. And I think the Heritage is a very important business in our town and we want to help them as much as we can. Chuck, go ahead. I know you had your hand up, sorry.
I had four questions. The first one for Jen is the, is the area that we're talking about expanding to basically where the Brew Fest is held most years?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. The second question is the duration. This looks like it's an amendment to the description and definition of the licensed premises. I mean, I guess each year when we were new, let's assume there's a problem with it, we do want to change our minds. Right now, I don't see any reason not to make it permanent, but the first is a question. Is this a permanent change to the definition of the licensed premises? Which I guess every year when we were new and review the liquor license, we can take a look at it. But this, this basically is a permanent change in that definition, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of George's question, in our pack that we got a July 28th, 2015 policy from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission and item three on it says that you have to isolate the area with either a fence, rope, or other means to prevent access from a public walkway. So I'm assuming just roping it off would be sufficient to isolate the area from the walkway, but just so you know, that is a state requirement. Did you, I assume you submitted this to us? Did you, have you seen that?
You're muted, Jen.
Muted.
It won't let, okay.
There you go.
Can you, my son just totally interrupted.
Oh, sorry. What it is, what he said was, we had these guidelines for extension of premises to patio and outdoor areas. And as Chuck pointed out, number three says, the premises must be enclosed by a fence, rope, or other means to prevent access from a public walkway, which is what I had mentioned earlier. So it seems like it's simple as, like you said, you have like the split rail fence, I think, out there that keeps it from the public area. That's probably enough, I would imagine, to meet that regulation.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I understood, that that would be enough for that.
If I can think between the.
Go ahead, Eric.
When they do the Brew Fest, if this is same areas, that's actually a very strict area because you have to pay to get in the Brew Fest. And it's like, it's very defined with the bushes and the fences and the trees and the stone wall. I remember that very well. It's not like, you know, it's an open area to the parking lot. There was very, only a couple entry points in and out of that area. Seems like it'd be a pretty easy area to secure.
Yeah, we are hoping to do something too with more definitive like polls that will hopefully get up. Again, like we can't put or invest a lot of money into this, but if there is something that we need to do to make it more defined, we will do that, but we want to make it so it's not, it's not like our patio, which is very set and is stone. We want this to be more free flowing, a larger area that we can, you know, wait for the guidelines and see what they are and then determine how to set it up once we have that. But I'm not looking to use the whole lawn area all the way up to the street. It's going to be clearly defined.
Since this is a public, if anybody has, Chuck, I'll let you speak in a second, but just a reminder to anybody that's on here from the public, if you want to have, if you have a question or a comment, please send a chat in the chat window so I can recognize you because I can't see everybody because there's two separate screens. So.
Renee has a question. George, Renee has a question. She chatted.
Okay, Renee. David, could you unmute Renee so she can ask a question? Chuck, go ahead while he does that and then I'll recognize Renee.
The fourth item was Jen mentioned that the application has the incorrect number. I think it's the occupancy number should be 222, is that correct?
Yes.
So the question to David and Jen is, do we correct that in our motion tonight? Are we approving it with a 222 occupancy number? I mean, as submitted, it's a 135 occupancy number.
I just found that out from looking at my, I had them send over my liquor license today and my occupancy. So that was just the things that the ABBCC already has, which is why, I remember from when we first did this in 2015, we were able to make some changes during the selectman meeting on that actual license. They even wanted me to change the time that we had our liquor license to later in the evening and we didn't want to do that because we didn't want to go week.
We can maybe make that change in the motion if we, or recognize that in the motion.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, Renee. I know you had a question.
Yes, I was just, can you hear me?
Turnify yourself if you're not.
Renee Montella, 23, Stony Brook Road. And my question is about the aesthetics of the possible picnic tables and tent and possible additional porta potties if needed out on the lawn like that. So I'm just curious about the aesthetics of it.
So we definitely will not have porta potties out on the lawn. That is only if we were going to be extending our capacity over 135 because of the septic system. That's not, this is not our intention to expand Heritage capacity by any means. This is just expanding the outdoor space allowed. So basically like what Eric was saying, we would be moving tables from outside, I mean, from inside to outside space. So aesthetically though, I mean, I feel good about the aesthetics of Heritage and we're very careful about that and what we want it to look like. So what our vision is definitely just an extension of what already exists. As far as picnic tables, there's this great, I don't want to spoil this, but there's this really cool restaurant on the Cape that had different people and all their kind of regular guests pitch in and kind of sponsor a table where they would decide the color paint of the table, which of course has to fit into the Heritage colors of, you know, either royal blue or white. They would have a little plaque on the table that would say their name or a group name, something that would be fun for the community as well. And again, these tables would be able to be movable and not anything that would be permanent throughout the year. It would be something out, you know, during the warmer months, you know, similar to, we just brought in, you know, like different Adirondack chairs, you know, that kind of look, but nothing different from what we've already, you know, I feel proven and provided to the town.
Great. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion from somebody on the Select Board to approve the revisions? Go ahead, Chuck.
I would move that the Board approves the amendment filed by L.J.M. Hospitality for the Amendment Change or Alteration of Premises Information Based on Information Submitted With One Change, which is to amend the occupancy number to 222.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All right, if we have no other questions, then I'll do a roll call vote. Paul, yes. Yeah, go ahead, discussion. Paul?
Just under discussion, I think it's our responsibility in these hard times to support the businesses in the community to the extent that we can. And this seems like a very reasonable thing to do to support the Heritage, which is a key player in our downtown business area. So I, for those reasons, I'm going to vote yes on this.
Totally agree, Paul. As I said before, they're a very important business to town. We should do whatever we can to support them. So roll call vote. Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Durances?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And I vote aye, 5-0. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you so much. I hope to see you all soon. I'm muted. I hope to see you all soon. Thank you. Thank you for your support with Takeout. We really, really, really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is consideration of items affected by COVID-19 state local emergency. The first item is annual town meeting warrant and election. We need to talk about the splitting of the town meeting to two separate warrants. We talked before about doing like the first, what is it, nine articles that include the budget items and then also the potential, there was one article that's time sensitive to grant right of way on Coolidge Street. So, and I think we wanted to talk about the different capital requests and see if, make sure there weren't any that were absolutely imminent and needed to be done now and can wait till September. So I guess I'll open it up for discussion on this. Jackie, I see your hand raised. If, David, if you could unmute Jackie. There you go. Go ahead, Jackie.
I just wanted to point out that we should probably have the question on here about making the treasurer an appointed position. That should go on the June ballot as well.
On the ballot, okay.
Yeah, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, we're talking about the town meeting, sorry.
Talking about the town meeting right now.
Yep, sorry.
No problem. Anybody want to kick off a discussion on this or your thoughts? Paul, go ahead.
Sure. So the majority of the towns in which I'm town council have two annual, two town meetings regularly. They have one in the spring and they have one in the fall and it works pretty well. But some of the communities have only one town meeting, like Nantucket, has just decided to have no town meeting until the fall. The theory is that even trying to have a town meeting in June is going to be very difficult. A lot of people are going to be afraid to show up, even if the governor lifts the restrictions. The fact is that most of the voters who come to town meeting are in the category of vulnerable. And so the community like Nantucket and I think other communities are simply going to do away with a spring town meeting at all and just have the, just have one in the fall. The new legislation that passed allows communities to continue to operate after June 30th without a town meeting. If you, if anybody had listened to the debate on Nantucket, the concern was June is really too soon, July and August are the summer. So that really brings you to the fall. I think where I come out on that is to at least schedule the financial piece for June as we were planning to do. Because if things are still bad in June, we can then kick it over to the fall and have it join the rest of the articles in the fall. That way we preserve our options and we let events happen over which we have no control. But at the end of the day, we want a town meeting where people feel comfortable coming. This is a democracy. We just had a situation in another community in Marblehead where they went into court and asked the judge to remove their quorum requirement. The quorum there was 300 people for a June town meeting. And the judge granted it and for public safety reasons, there's no reason for 300 people to convene for a town meeting. And he set the quorum at 30 people. And my thought was to have a town meeting where 30 people show up just to pass some financial articles seems not very democratic. financial articles seems not very democratic. But that being said, I think we should stay, of course, set it up so that we have the financial articles on for June, but really focus on having our, our main town meeting in the fall. And so I've gone through the list of capital projects, and it was a column of capital projects that was edited down to be just a smaller group of projects. And the total appeared to be just a little under $1 million, but when I added up the numbers, the numbers were way below $1 million. And so I think there's an arithmetic error in the calculations. I just think we need to keep it as simple as possible and have as short a town meeting as possible. And to be realistic, that many, many people will make the choice not to go to this town meeting.
Thanks, Paul. Mary, did you, did you have anything you wanted to add on this or?
Go ahead, Mary. No, sorry, George, go ahead.
Yep. I was gonna, just Mary with the town moderators on here, so I wanted to see what she was thinking on this.
Right, well, as, I mean, I'm there to do whatever people decide they want to do. I mean, if it's going to be in June, I'll be there to run the meeting. If it goes on to September, I'll be there for that. I, I do think it's, you know, at the very least, I think it would be worthwhile to split the warrant so that we're doing the financial articles in June and not the other things for the reason that some of the articles in particular are likely to be controversial. And I think no matter which side people might fall on, I think they, you know, the zoning articles and so forth that have to pass by two thirds, you know, you want to have vigorous and appropriate discussion for all those articles. And, you know, if you're, if we can't get 100, well, first of all, we may not be able to get 100 people. So that's, you know, that's an issue in itself. If we, if we do not lower our quorum, and as I understand, I'm familiar with that case that Paul was talking about in Marblehead, that, that had to get injunctive relief. And Jackie and I actually talked about this the other day where you, I, I believe that the selectmen can't on their own simply vote to lower the quorum. It has to either be done by the legislature through a request, or it would have to be done with injunctive relief. And so, you know, that seems to be a problem. If you can't get 100 people there, you know, what do you do that night, you know? And so, you know, I, I agree with Paul that we should schedule something. Should we have it? If we can't have it, we can't have it.
I just want to, Marion Nitro posted a chat question. I'll just read it for you, Marion. Says, is the board considering other approaches to town meeting that avoids attendance in person, presentations online and remote voting? Till there's a vaccine, most Sherburne residents should not attend a public meeting near you. The discussion is not realistic regarding the timeline of the coronavirus risk. Thank you, Marion, for that question. Mary, would there be any way we could do something remotely?
From, from what I understand, um.
You, you. Sorry.
From, from what I understand, from discussions on the moderators' listserv, there is currently no way to hold a virtual town meeting.
Okay. I think Marion is unmuted now.
Like this, for example, we, we could not do it via Zoom.
No, no.
You, you could perhaps set up a number of rooms at the high school, have some people in the auditorium, some in the cafeteria, but, you know, and then you have to network it all together. You have to have multiple moderator, assistant moderators to watch all the rooms and. I, I did send Superintendent Kio an email asking, you know, how, how many people could fit in the auditorium, you know, spaced at the six feet apart in every direction. And I haven't heard back from him yet, but one of the things to remember is that of the nine and five and four people that are normally on the stage, a lot of those people are going to end up in the audience because you can't distance them that effectively on the stage. So it's a problem.
Thanks, Mary. Marion, did you want to, Marion, you're unmuted, so I'm going to let you give your answer.
Oh, yeah. I mean, just looking realistically at the timeline, the probable timeline of this pandemic, until there's a vaccine, somewhere between 90 and maybe in Sherburne, 95% of the population is still vulnerable to the coronavirus. So I think, and the virus is not going to disappear by the fall. It's not. It's still, you know, running rampant in the country and it's going to, it's going to percolate even after things get better and after we're able to partially open. So there must be a way. I mean, the House of Representatives in Washington is meeting remotely. You're right that it probably isn't manageable on Zoom, but I would just like to see us seriously look into other options besides putting people together in any arrangement in the auditorium.
Thanks, Marion. Erica, saw your hand up.
Just to kind of compound upon what both Mary and Marion said, every other week, I'm actually involved with the MPO meetings to determine tip funding under the, under the Mass DOT, or I should say under the Massachusetts state. And some of those meetings have exceeded 100 people and have actually been managed pretty well. They're done within three or four hours. And if you have someone in control of the meeting there, and just like this where everyone's muted and used to raise, raise hand, I've seen meetings well in excess of 100 people being managed really well. So feasibly, I, and technically, I do think it's possible, whether it's legal now, then I think that's something that needs to be explored. And to what Marion said, you know, all the experts are, are expecting a rebound in the fall. I think having a fall town meeting is not the solution. If anything, there might be some kind of late summer. I know what Paul said, you know, there's a summer vacations. I don't think we're going to see the same summer vacation model we've seen for the last, let's say, 99 years since the, you know, 1918 flu. So I think we're going to see something a little different. And I would recommend one or two things. Either you do consider some kind of live town meeting in the late summer, because I do think June is just a month away, and in late summer, or we, we really explore the option of a virtual town meeting and try to, you know, push that and see if there's any precedent for that.
Paul, go ahead.
So as town council for a number of communities, I've sat through a lot of meetings talking about how to operate a town meeting. And even if you spread everybody out, as Mary has, has suggested, and you use different rooms, and, and some people are talking about using the high school athletic field and the bleachers and all that kind of stuff, even if you do that, there's still microphones that get shared. There still are a limited number of bathrooms that people have to be able to use. There still are people coming in and out of entrances. And because of that, it's not safe. It can't be made, it can't really be made, made completely safe. It can be made safer than packing 200 people into the Lincoln Commons. Yes, certainly we can do that. But can it be made completely safe? The consensus of the, the different task force that I've participated in, the answer is no. The law does not permit virtual town meetings. The law does not have any recognition at all to any alternative way of doing this. There is no meaningful legislation that's pending that we could get behind that would cause this change. And even if there was, I don't see it passing by June. There's, there's too many stakeholders with too many different views out there about how things should happen. So many municipalities do not have a town meeting. Many municipalities like cities have a city council, and they meet all year round and they can meet virtually and so on. So this problem only affects communities like Sherburne that has town meetings. Even an open town meeting is different from a representative town meeting where communities that have 100 people who are elected by the citizens to participate, you could try to do something virtually there. But an open town meeting where anybody can come and anybody can participate, that's such an important tradition in the, in the history of the Commonwealth. It's, it's just not likely to be changed. That's why I'm saying June, we should plan for, hope for the best and plan something for June. But realistically, I think we got to plan the, the real town meeting to be later and maybe, as Eric has said, maybe in, in August or, or late summer.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea, Paul. We do have, you know, our next meeting's May 14th, which is the week, I think that's leading up to the time when the stay at home order is potentially till the 18th. So maybe we'll know a little bit more by then where we're at for the month ahead. I don't think we need to make a decision right now, tonight. I'm glad we're having this discussion, but I think what makes sense is probably to leave the 16th on the calendar for now, knowing that there's a chance that later on we could can't, we, we may have to move it. Go ahead, Eric.
Just a quick one. I'm going to ask a question of someone that's going to probably regret staying on the line. Dorothea, you're a Needham Town Meeting member. What's Needham doing? Representative Town Meeting?
As far as I know, I think they have scheduled something for June 20th. So.
Is it virtual or is it live as a representative town meeting?
I assume it's going to be spaced out and live, but I'm not 100% sure on that. I have to, to check on that if, if you're interested.
Yeah.
Marion, go ahead. I see you have an comment.
Sorry. Open a representative.
Sorry, just another opinion. It, it is illegal at the state level, but you know, I notice, according to Governor Baker, and all I know is what I hear from him on the radio every day, they're making a lot of accommodations at the state level for this pandemic. And it doesn't seem to be totally impossible that they might be able to change the law regarding virtual town meetings. It's possible, and it might be worth looking into it through MAPC, or maybe Paul would know how to do this, or anyway, just a comment.
Mary, I think your question was to Dorothea, Needham is a representative because I know.
Yes, I think, so that makes a difference as well.
Right.
An open course is a representative.
It does, and that's why I actually asked, because I knew, I saw she was a town meeting representative on her resume. And I think there's some precedent there, honestly, if they go virtual along that line to do it into the open. There's only 57, I think, cities in Massachusetts, so the rest of 351, where there's almost 300 of them are actually, are actually towns, and only a fraction of those are representative town meetings that I have to think there's going to be some accommodation that's going to come to a head.
Perhaps, although I will tell you that I've been on the listserv of the mass moderators every day, and people are talking about it, talking about it, talking about it. There seems to be every, all the town meetings that have been moved at this point have been moved to mid to late June, some of them as late as June 30th. People just trying to, I think, get it in under the line. But, you know, who knows? No one seems at this point to have any idea of a way other than this injunctive relief that Marblehead went for, how to make any change at this point.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I, I understand we have to make a decision tonight, but I'm not in favor of having it scheduled for June. I don't, we don't have to decide that tonight, but you know, when I look at the nine items or maybe if we add one or two others like the Coolidge, I don't know what we couldn't do without a town meeting that we can do with having one. We can spend, as Paul has indicated, we can spend, based on this year's budget, you know, a monthly allocated amount going beyond June 30th. So I don't see what advantage we have to having a meeting in June.
Can, can, we hear from either Sharon or Steve about how you think the budget, if we didn't vote on a budget before June 30th? I, I mean, are there any major changes in budgets or is it something that could simply roll forward until we did a meeting in the fall?
Steve, do you want to, do you want to speak to that or?
Just thinking off the top of my head, George, could we get, essentially the question is, could we get through the start of fiscal year 2021 using existing budget guidelines? Or that's, that's what the choice would be, is to not make any change to the previous year's budget? And so departments have to abide by previous year's budgets. I know that, you know, for the most part, cost of living increases for salaries go up on a year to year basis. And so for most departments that have submitted budgets, there is an increase on the salary line. And so I expect that if the departments have to operate with last year's budget numbers, does that mean that salaries are not increased as expected? Or if salaries are increased as expected, they have to cut in other areas of the department? I guess that would have to be sorted. I don't know, so that's one issue. I don't know if there are any fiscal repercussions from a legal standpoint. You know, as you've made, as you've stated, towns can operate now using the previous year's fiscal operating budget. But I don't know as far as financing that, if there would be any challenges there.
My question is mainly on salaries, like you said, Steve, because I know we just, I, I see you, Mary, I'll get to you in a second. The question is, like, we just signed a new contract with our teachers that's supposed to start July 1st. There's other contracts that if we don't vote it before July 1st, can we increase the salaries that, that are in these contracts? Mary, go ahead.
Well, remember that the, the salary increases are part of the new budget.
Right.
Unless the budget is passed, the new salaries are not in effect. So you're simply continuing with the salaries that you're paying now. You're, you're, you're running the town on the same budget. So it's not, I believe, you don't have to increase the salaries because you haven't voted to do so.
But what, how does that work if you're under contract with like the teachers' union or the different unions?
Well, for one, the teachers' union is unique, I would say, in that their contract runs September 1st through August 31st. So over the summer, the teachers are being paid.
All right.
You know, they're, they're, they're getting 2020 wages over the summer anyway.
Right.
So they're kind of out of it in that sense.
But other employees, like we have, you know, the police union or the, or contracts with, with, with other employees. Paul, do you have a comment on that?
The quick answer is that you, you, when you have your town meeting, you, you pay retroactively back to the beginning of the fiscal year or the contract year.
Okay.
So it's not that people will be out of money, it's just that they will get their money in a, in a different way.
Later on.
Okay.
Later on. Okay, that, that's a good, thank you. I just want a clarification on that because I think that's probably the biggest issue of not voting a budget before June 30th, is that expected salary increases would not be there for people, but they would still get the money just later on.
Sure. Once the budget is passed, then that's the budget for FY 2021.
Right.
Until that's passed, you're just continuing to pay on 2020.
Right.
No different than in the private sector where you're waiting for a approval on board of new salaries if it's retroactive, you can make it up in the next paycheck.
Sean, did you have something to say? I see your name popping up here on me.
Me?
Yeah, sorry.
He was unmuted. Somehow I got unmuted.
Ah, okay. Ah, okay, um. I think then maybe we, uh, we've had a good discussion on this. I don't think we need to cancel the 16th yet unless somebody else on the board feels differently. But we can revisit this on the 14th and make a decision then.
Uh, George, one more thing.
Yes.
Um, the, the acts of 2020 that were passed says that you must spend a minimum of one twelfth. Of your, on a month to month basis of the 2020 budget. You can spend more and you are allowed to spend some amount of your free cash as well for specific things. You can't just spend it willy nilly, but there are conditions under which you can spend some of that.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on this, on the split of the town meetings? Because the other, the next item I want to discuss is, well, I guess capital requests have, do we need? Do we have something we want to go through on that or does that kind of, was that kind of covered? Because we don't know whether we're doing something on the 16th or not. Go ahead, Paul.
So as, as, as I said at the beginning, uh, I think we should hope for the best and plan for the worst. So we should go forward with the plans for a June town meeting. And as part of that, we should pare down as we're doing. So there was a list in the packet of, of, uh, responses from the different department heads as to what they felt they needed and shouldn't wait for a fall town meeting. And of that list, it looked like it totaled $1 million, which struck me as being very high. But when I looked at the numbers, it was basically 300,000, 300,000 and some small numbers. So I, I think there's an addition mistake in there and there's been a significant, uh, uh, effort made already to cut those.
Okay. Sharon, can you clarify that for us before our next meeting?
It added up. I just added it up. It looks.
I actually didn't, I didn't get a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
No, sorry about that.
Sorry, I thought it came, I didn't realize it didn't come, sorry about that.
The items add up.
Okay.
Then that's too much, too much money is my view.
Well, we got, go through the list and go through the list and identify what you don't think is critical. I see you, Steve, just a second.
Yeah, and Sean too.
Yeah. David, can you unmute Stephen Leahy?
Uh, yeah.
There you go, Stephen.
Thank you, George. So last night, Servant Advisory Committee met and, um, we were discussing both operating and capital budgets. We had, um, what we discussed was really, um, are there any time sensitive capital requests? And I believe Sharon had also sent out a, um, email to all the departments asking, are any of your capital requests, um, time sensitive? And what we got back as of last night, what we discussed last night as far as time sensitive capital was really relatively small. Something from the Fire Department for portable radios, Police Department vehicle. And a portion, not all, but certainly a significant portion of the DPW stormwater MS4 compliant, compliance, um, capital requests. And so just off of the, back to the envelope, uh, 6062, buck 20. About $300,000 in capital was deemed as time sensitive. And so we had been playing, we had been, you know, obviously the timing of the town meetings up for debate at this point in time. But, um, that was about the number that we came to for time sensitive capital requests.
Okay. So the next question is, do we need to, um, change the ballot for the Prop 2 and 1/2 questions? Right? Jackie, that was, go ahead, Jackie.
I think Sean had a question on capital too, when you get finished.
Okay.
Um, so am I, is it okay for me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jackie.
So I have not had the ballot made up yet because I knew that originally that the date was going to move. And then also that you guys wanted to change the questions. One thing is, is that I am going to have to advertise somehow that we will have early voting ballots available. And so I'm going to need a lot of time to get that all set up. So I'm hoping if you guys don't decide on the questions tonight, I'm absolutely, it's, I think, the next, the next select board meeting. I'm really going to need to know. The vendor can make up the ballots pretty quickly, but I'm going to need time to, you know, send them all out and, and et cetera. So I have not made the ballots up. So it's not, it's not going to be an issue in terms of people are going to be voting for something that's, you know, on the ballot. That's not going to count.
Yeah, because it's, um, I think we really need to go through them all and make sure, and make sure everything's out of there that's not critical. I mean, if we don't have them, the other thing is if we decide at our next meeting that we're not having a town meeting in June, then it's kind of moot because we wouldn't have voted on it yet anyway.
Well, is Darren on tonight? Because I thought that the last meeting, he said that you guys needed to.
Darren's not on, but he's available. He's available if you need him.
Paul, do you have something to add?
Yes, I, when the whole question of ballot overrides came up, I expressed the view that when, when people are sick and people are dying and people are losing their jobs, that it just didn't seem appropriate to me to go to the voters with ballot questions like that. And even at 300,000, I would put all of the, those kinds of ballot questions over till the fall. We don't need to do the override question immediately. And that some of these things, if we needed to, we can fund provisionally one way and change it in the fall to be a different way. And then have ballot questions in the fall.
Okay. Paul, go ahead.
So I just don't think this is the time to be bothering our citizens with this business about increasing their taxes. Let's just defer this or if we had to, let's use a little free cash to pay that 300,000. You got certified at 1.6 million. Let's take 300,000 and use it to, 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 to fund the quick essential things. And then in the fall, maybe we can look at, uh, making them into, uh, borrowings or whatever.
Okay. But. Yeah, because the only way you're not going to increase taxes is if you do it through free cash because we've already taxed for that money. So, um, but if you spend money, most likely your taxes are going to go up. So you, you either don't buy the thing or you're, somebody's got to pay for it.
George, you talked to Sean because some of them are compliance related.
Right, Sean, go ahead.
George, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
So, um, and this isn't a disagreement with what Paul just said, but a different take on that. Part of the discussion with advisory and, and, um, in line with my last version of my budget. The budget and some of the capital are on hand in hand. So the, you know, advisory made a pretty strong push, let's get the operating budget down. And so if you take an example of the, um, perhaps just the stormwater, there's compliance work that's mandated. And we haven't been given relief on that. So we're continuing to work on that. And there is no money in the budget, nor do we want to put the money in the budget. If we go to town meeting and pass a budget, it's lower than last year. It's a reduction. It's not even, you know, one per month. It's, it's actually a reduction. Some of those things, if we have to carry that budget for six months, it'll be really difficult to do. Without the funding that we were expecting, including even the roadwork. I, I would drastically reduce it. I mean, we were at 450, we went to 350, I wouldn't even be asking for that. But we slashed that in the budget and I'd, I'd prefer to keep the budget the way it was. If, if we're going to a town meeting with, with a, with an annual budget. But that's why some of those items are still in there. I had a different version than what you guys have in the packet, but it's, it's worth a discussion later. I don't think we should get into the details tonight, but it's worth a discussion if we're going to head towards town meetings still on what could be in there. And one other comment to the ballot, this is a perfectly good opportunity to just use one ballot question. So it doesn't have to have the specifics if they're still in flux. Rather than, you know, sometimes we split all those different items into different questions and it should be an all or nothing. So there isn't much.
Okay, Sean, just a second. I have a question for Sharon on this, a couple of questions. One, you, we got the certified free cash, as Paul said, I think it was like 1.6 million, something. And you said that represented 4.6%, right?
Yes.
Um, and the recommendation is to stay between 3% and 5%. So I assume if we spent 300,000 out of free cash, or the other thing that somebody just pointed out to me, how much money do we have left in the reserve fund in 2020?
Right now, we have.
Potentially use some of that money as well.
Yeah, we have 269,000.
There you go. So we, you know, I, I know we may need some of that reserve fund for the Board of Health, as Jeff's pointed out and some other, and there are other COVID related expenses. But between that 260 and we have a little bit of leeway with some free cash, potentially we could do it without any ballot, as Paul suggested.
George?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to point out that if we're talking about an, an August town meeting, we're only talking about a, a month and a half. I mean, the fiscal year starts July 1.
Right.
We're, we're talking, we're asking Sean to wait a month and a half essentially on some things. And the things that absolutely have to be purchased today because we need it today, then we should use the reserve fund or we should use 300,000. Steve Leahy said that, that all the capital stuff totaled 300,000. So 300,000 is, it seems to me to be a doable number. I, 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 I guess people are getting sick, more are going to get sick. You know, today they reported more people died in Massachusetts. I think there was 157 people died.
And we're up to 3562 in total.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I hear you on that. So do we want to, do we have a motion to remove those Prop 2 and 1/2 questions?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll, I'll second it, but let's have a discussion. Chuck, what do you think?
Um, I, I want to wait until we decide whether or not we're going to have a bifurcated town meeting or, um, a, 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 a single town meeting. Because that affects the timing on, uh, on the, the Prop 2 and 1/2 election.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, that, that was my question. I'd like to establish the annual and special or just a standalone annual town meeting date before removing the Prop 2 and 1/2 question decision.
Yeah, I, I agree with that also. And I guess I wondered if we want to fund it with free cash or with the reserve fund. A reserve fund we can do ourselves, but with free cash, we would still have to have the town vote on it usually. And then we fund it with free cash or with override. But usually they voted on the project to begin with.
Right, they do need to vote. You're, you're correct on that. Paul?
No, the new statute allows you to use free cash after June 30th to cover this kind of thing.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting not to do an override. I'm suggesting the town clerk needs to know what ballot to prepare.
Right.
And it's not fair to the town clerk to put this thing off. And I'm saying having those ballot questions fixed now, so she goes print balance for a June election is a bad idea.
Jackie?
I, I can wait until the next select board meeting in two weeks, but that's, that would be the last date that I would feel comfortable. Because we are going to be required to have live polling hours and eventually you guys, maybe next select board meeting. I'm going to ask you guys to vote on that. But I am going to be encouraging most people to do absentee balloting, um, no excuse absentee balloting or early voting by mail. And so that takes time to get all that done.
Right, so I think, Paul, you're right. I think maybe it isn't fair to wait till next meeting on, on both the town meeting question and, um, this ballot question. Because I think they go, Chuck, you've got to make a good point when you say they go hand in hand. So one other option is let's just cancel the June meeting and plan one for August.
And just one more thing, um, we do have the September 1st state primaries, so you just need to keep that in mind.
Okay.
What was that date?
In the town meeting.
September 1st, you said?
I would support that recommendation, George.
Okay, um.
Wendy's got a question.
Wendy just, Wendy, Elissa just asked a question, is this something all town hall employees can assist Jackie and Tony with?
Maybe, yeah.
Jackie?
I'm sorry, I said, Wendy was texting me, so.
I'm sorry, Wendy just asked a question on the chat that said, is this something all town hall employees can assist Jackie and Tony with?
They, I, I don't think that will be necessary, but I know everyone is offered, but we'll worry about it when it comes. I mean, that, you know, the annual town election normally isn't a huge turnout. And unless, you know, right now they're not requiring us to send ballots to every single person. Legislation is, um, in front of, you know, well, the legislatures do have a bill out there that will, um, cause ballots to be sent out possibly on September 1st and November 3rd, but not for the annual town election. So I, I'll probably be able to handle it. People have to send in applications and then I can send them out.
So you could, if, if, one of the suggestions I heard was August, we could look at Tuesday, August 18th or Tuesday, August 25th as two potential dates.
Tuesday, August 25th?
Yeah, yeah, those are just two that I just.
18th to 25th, yeah.
I don't know, who knows what the school year is going to be, but.
We'll start September 2nd.
2nd, okay.
I think either date's fine.
Because then in Labor Day is September, September 7th. Late this year, so, um.
Jack, I mean, could we get a combined ballot in for September 1st if we did do 25th?
Jackie said you didn't want to combine the ballots. She and I talked about this.
Well, I, I didn't want to combine the ballots on November 3rd. The ones, there is one thing, I did contact elections. We can only have three questions on the presidential ballot. And I'm assuming that we'll only be able to have three questions on the September 1st ballot. So it, right now we've got 10 questions. And so that means I have to have two separate ballots, which means two check-in tables, two checkout tables. Unfortunately, I'm really disappointed in the legislature that they have not taken, um, they haven't passed anything to change town meeting. And they haven't addressed election workers either. Like I have to ask for a waiver from the Elections Division. Right now, they didn't say that, you know, we only need one person at the checkout table or whatever. So I am concerned if there is social distancing in place, how I'm going to manage having two check-ins and two check-outs because I have to have two ballots. And it's also there, it's very time consuming. You know, we have been like a 95% turnout for the presidential election. So I was just, I will do it if that's what the board wants, we'll make it work. But I just think social distancing, if that's going to be required, it's going to be pretty difficult to do all of that.
Well, and the ballot questions too, I mean, the question is, um, yeah, I think that would be too much to try to do that on the presidential. Uh, and by adding to the state, yeah, I don't think you can do that either.
Well, we have to have two check-ins, two check-outs.
Yeah, that seems a lot. So you're almost better off having, it would be crazy, but you'd have an election. I guess we're still having the election in June for the offices, right?
For the offices and then also the one question, um, to take the treasurer from elected to appointed.
Right, so we have that. And then we have election and a state election in September, September 1st.
The primary.
Yep, and then we're proposing in October, potentially an October election if we have ballot questions. And then in November, presidential election.
Yes.
That seems like a lot of, a lot for you.
It is what it is. We'll make, you know, it's a crazy year, we'll make it work. But it's just, I just think, um, there's just so much uncertainty right now about the way the state's going to allow us to run the elections. I'm just concerned about. Um, I'm just concerned about, you know, having two check-in tables and two checkout, and we can't use the community center because the library's in there. You know, I suppose I could move it to the gym or something in Pine Hill, but you guys would have to vote on that later.
Okay.
But, you know, upstairs on the second floor of Town Hall, it's tight.
Okay, so what is the will of the Board? What are you guys thinking?
Well, first of all, I like the idea of moving it to the Pine Hill Gym. You've got a lot more space to work with there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, the problem is, is if it's on a Tuesday during the school year,
Right.
School's in session, you don't want everybody in town just walking into the school where you've got young children there. Security issues when it comes to that.
Well, I, I mean, the pro is, I just don't think there's any way it's realistic to think we can do it in June, so I definitely-
I'm ga, gathering that from everybody tonight.
But just clarify something for me, though. So the general election is still in June? I mean, is that-
Town election, yeah.
And is that considered just as safe, cuz people coming into, you know, the same, same election hall and so on, can we, whatever you call it, social space for that?
We have a very, we have a, a smaller turnout for the annual town election, and for this year, they are allowing for, um, annual town, for municipalities through June 30th, have no excuse absentee balloting, and, and they're allowing early voting. Normally, we don't have early, an early voting ballot for a municipal election, so there'll be a lot of, um, ability for people to vote by mail. And then I'm gonna have to have four hours of live polling hours that I will ask you guys to vote on.
Okay.
Because I'll have to advertise that. And I'll probably just send out a base, the cheapest way for me to notify people is to just do like a flyer, like we do with the dog flyer. A mass mailing, you know, a folded piece of paper telling everybody to apply for an absentee, absentee or early voting ballot. They still have to fill out an application.
Okay. So, what do we think we wanna do here, guys? Do we wanna, I think, what I, what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we should probably cancel the June 16th town meeting with the understanding that capital items, um, can be potentially paid for through reserve fund transfer, the critical capital items paid for through reserve fund transfers. We also have the ability to use free cash for COVID expenses and that kind of thing. Um, so I think we could not, we, we could get away with not having the June 16th town meeting, and then we'd also therefore, uh, cancel the ballot questions, because we'd wait till the fall to do those.
So moved.
Mary, Mary, go ahead.
I, I just had a question, um, I think Jackie and I talked about this on the phone yesterday, but, um, since, well, the Acts of 2020 allow current office holders to remain in office until the election, whenever that happens. And so, since there are no contested offices, um.
But there's some people who are not, I know Mary Moore does not want to stay in her position past the election.
And I, and I think that we're still required to hold the election, the last day is June 30th.
Okay, so we did, we still have to hold that?
Yes, we have the, we have the question that we're, we have to put on there for the treasurer.
Okay.
We're required, that's required to be on the, on the ballot.
Okay.
So hopefully, people will vote through absentee or-
Yeah, they can vote by mail.
Yep.
And then, you know, I'll do social, I'm, I'm ordering sneeze guards to protect the, um, uh, the fire chief and Sean, uh, you know, are willing to give me gloves and masks and things like that, so I mean, I'm, whoever I can get, hopefully, I'll be able to get some people, otherwise, I don't know, I'll ask for a waiver from elections and Tony and I will be, uh, and, and Renee's always willing to help, so, you know, we'll have a few people.
I mean, Jackie, how soon before they receive it, once the deadline for them to order an absentee ballot?
It's, to order an absentee or early voting ballot is always the day before the election by 12 noon.
Okay.
So, um,
It's a non-contested rate, it's no big deal, but I'm still, I know people are gonna stay away. It will reduce the number of turnout having it in June.
Right.
We're gonna have people apprehensive, Sherwin has an older age compared to other communities. Um, yeah, I know, expect a low turnout anyway, but, I mean, I'll support it, but just as long as people are know, and we know this going eyes wide open, that by having the general election in June, we will get a lower turnout due to concerns on the virus.
But if I, but if I, everybody knows they can-
Uncontested, so I don't think it's that big of a deal.
But, but if everybody knows that they can vote by, by mail, they don't need an excuse, they can just vote by mail, uh, you know.
It's in theory, but the facts are the facts, and, and, and not, everyone does know, and people, you know, still show up, they're like, oh yeah, it's time to vote today. But, I guess it is what it is in these circumstances.
Right.
We have Sue Kelleher, I'm voting on Sue, she can get the message out very well.
All right, so, yeah, so I have a motion from Paul to cancel the June 16th town meeting and to eliminate the Prop 2.5 ballot questions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Mr. Durentis?
Vote aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
I'm gonna wait for Chuck to unmute himself so he can say aye, or nay, whichever he choose.
Unmute yourself. Discover that the hard way.
He's, he's okay.
I vote yawn. I vote yes.
Neither of my choices. All right, I vote, I vote aye as well, so it's 5-0. No six, no June 16th town meeting and Prop 2.5 questions are canceled. Um, I think we've discussed everything we need to hear, I don't think we need to talk about the quorum now. So, we can skip over that and move on to our next item, which is the tax anticipation note and state aid anticipation note. Heidi Doyle, uh, David, could you unmute Heidi?
I, I think he did.
Okay, hi Heidi.
Hi, um, this should be fairly quick. We do not need a tax anticipation note. Um, we did get enough revenue ahead of time, so that will be off the schedule. Um, we, the, I'm asking for permission to go forward with the state anticipation note, which we had last year, this is the state funding portion of the library building, it's 726,720 that we did last year, that is up in June, that we will need to renew because we're not at a point where we can get the state funds.
Okay. How, how was the collection rate? Nancy, I see you're on here, if, um, if, David, could you unmute Nancy? I was just curious how that turned out since today's April 30th.
Well, as I have said in the past, our taxpayers are awesome. They really step up to the plate, and we've had a really good return. We still have, and in prior years, on May 1st, we have collected over a million. We still have 2 million outstanding, which is really incredible for what we've been through. Um, people seem to understand, they've called and they've asked about the waiver, and when I've said to them, we're really counting on people who can pay to pay, so that we don't have to borrow. People have been really good about sending their tax payments and coming, and they're a little confused about when they come to the door and find it locked. But, but we try to direct them to the, to the box, and that, I, I wanna impress again that our, um, favored way of receiving the money is the online payment. But next is if they would put it in the silver box, because handling the mail is just so awkward now. Cuz it takes gloves and a mask and spray and all that kind of stuff, so, um, if people who are paying tomorrow are welcome to, um, use the online or use the silver box, please. And I had calls about, uh, our hours tomorrow, there are no hours, the building is locked to the public, but we check the box on a regular basis, and of course, online is good until, you know, midnight or whatever, so, um, I'd encourage people who, who can pay to pay, but I have to commend the people who have already made the sacrifice and parted with their money, and we really, really appreciate that, cuz that has saved us from having to go out and borrow to get us through June, so.
Nancy, thanks for all the work you've been putting into, I really appreciate.
Very much. It really isn't easy working with only one person at a time in the office and not having the, the, um, uh, extra people, uh, to help us process things, but Pam has been doing yeoman's service, and, um, we've tried to keep the money flowing, but I have to credit the taxpayers themselves, cuz if they didn't do it, we wouldn't be able to do our job, so. Again, thank you to Sherman.
Heidi, so what, you need us to vote on that state aid anticipation note, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion to renew the state aid anticipation note?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Waldron. Uh, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Durentis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so 5-0 for the state anticipation note. Thank you Heidi, thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the consideration for appointment for a permanent fire chief. Um, David, do you wanna take the lead on this?
Yeah, um, basically there, uh, we've had, been operating under an interim chief. And, um, I think since the departure of previous chief in December, somewhere around there. Um, the current chief, the interim chief is Zach Ward. And given the circumstances of the local and state emergency, and the amount of excellent work that he's done in the months he's here, we wanted to try to address, um, appointing a full-time chief. So, we, uh, in the past two weeks, we did advertise correctly, um, and meet the, uh, personnel admin plan. Um, we advertised in Metro West Daily News, uh, last Friday. Uh, the closing deadline was yesterday at noon. Um, we only received the one applicant, which, uh, it was from Zach Ward. So, you have one applicant in front of you. Um, I had also spoken to Neil McPherson, who I believe is on the line, and he was, um, willing to say a few things about, uh, you know, his take on things. If I could make sure that he's on.
Yeah, um, excellent. Neil, do you wanna go ahead and say a few words? Neil, are you on here?
I think he's the 818 number in the-
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll jump in here for a minute then, just because I've gotten a ton of positive feedback. Zach, the work you've been doing has been fantastic. Uh, I, I haven't heard a negative word about what you've been doing with the Fire Department, especially how you've been handling the pandemic, um, and I'm really proud to be, uh, appointing you as a permanent fire chief. Um, one email I got today from somebody I just wanted to share, he asked me to share it, uh, from Arthur Fennell, he said, "I understand that it's meeting tonight, the select board will consider whether to appoint interim fire chief Zach Ward to the position of permanent fire chief for town. As a resident, a member of the fire rescue department, and a former chair of the Public Safety Committee, I am writing to voice my wholehearted support for that appointment." So, just wanted to share that, um, and like I said, I've gotten a ton of positive feedback. Paul?
Well, I wanted to also say I'm supporting Zach Ward. I think he's been doing a great job. We need stability in these trying times, we're in the middle of a crisis. This isn't the time to try and change horses in midstream, as, as the saying goes. We've gotten somebody who's been successful so far, and done a good job, and we need him, so I'm prepared to vote yes.
Uh, anybody, Chuck?
I'll just add that, um, the, the committee that, uh, interviewed and recommended, uh, Zach as the interim, uh, I've got a couple of calls from people echoing what you've, uh, said, that the, um, just very pleased with his, his work. I also, you know, in anticipating a contract negotiation, just wanna mention that m, money is tight, so, you know, I wanna-
There we go, yeah. Well, I guess, well, I'd love to hear from you, Zach, how things have been going and-
Yeah, so, you know, I, I'd love the opportunity to speak, so I just have to say that, um, the, the officers and the, and the members of the Fire Department have been absolutely wonderful over the last six months, um, you know, the department has been through pro, it's, you know, probably one of its, its busier times in many, many years. As you know, we started the year off with a three-line fire on Townwide Road, um, we've had uh, three or four significant, uh, vehicle fires and accidents, we've had about 20 brush fires this year. Um, and then last month, uh, myself and two other engine companies, uh, responded to Halston, the fight, uh, the largest fire in Halston in 35 years, um, and, and at all those incidents and, and all those events, our people operated wonderfully. Um, and they continue to do so through this, this coronavirus pandemic, um, and I'd also like to, to thank the, uh, the other town departments, the Police Department, the DPW, um, Lieutenant Bento and Director, you know, everybody else, uh, the Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, for the support over the last six months, uh, but I do think, um, that, uh, that the morale in the department seems to be high, and I, I think we're moving forward. As challenging, as challenging as it may be during this, this pandemic, but, um, things, things, uh, certainly seem to be going in the right direction.
Thank you, Zach. I just got to note that, uh, Neil McPherson is on now, so Neil, would you like to say something?
Yeah, uh, well, can you hear me okay?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to, uh, also, uh, strongly recommend Zach, certainly as the interim fire chief. I've been on the Sherwin Fire Department for a number of years, and in a very short period of time, he's done a tremendous job in terms of working with the officers, working with the new recruits. I think, helping to improve morale, uh, doing a lot from a fiscal standpoint. And I think it's very important, the town has had a lot of turnover over the past, you know, eight years, 10 years, and what we need is someone who is, who understands the department, somebody who wants to be there, somebody who can show the leadership, and I think through a, through this COVID situation, some other challenges that Zach has faced very early on while working as the interim chief, he's clearly demonstrated those skills and that ability. And I'd also say that I think it's very important, um, that, you know, from a town standpoint, that clearly in hiring Zach, and if you look at his credentials and obviously his experience, that he's a very qualified person. And I think it's very important that we make sure that when it comes to his contract, and making sure that we're able to properly compensate him for those skills and abilities, that, that's gonna help us long-term in terms of being able to retain, uh, a quality candidate and a quality individual like Zach, so I, I think it's wonderful that Zach's gonna be appointed, and I think he's already doing great things and has many, uh, other opportunities and things that he's working on now that are just gonna help to lead this department to the future, which is so important, uh, during difficult times like this, and given the changes in the fire service in general.
Great, thanks Neil. Um, if I don't have any other questions, do I have a motion?
I'd like to be the one to make the motion, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I, I would move that we, uh, uh, go through the process with David Williams leading us in, um, uh, making a permanent uh, fire chief of Zach Ward and negotiating the contract, uh, commensurate with his capabilities. And my only words are, we're damn lucky we have it.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Paul got a second from Paul, so, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Durentis?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Great. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Thank you all, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Um, next is consideration of administrative items and routine business finance director. Just a second, David, make sure she's unmuted.
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, let's see, yesterday I did send out, um, the budget versus actual, and the, the town is trending well, um, we're running, uh, ahead of where we should be, which is, which is very, very good, um, and I, a lot of respect for the department heads for being very fiscally responsible. Um, I'm also working closely with the COVID team on tracking expenses, I'm working with Zach, and, um, we're going to, you know, make sure we get reimbursed for everything we can, we've set up a special code, so, um, I, I have that to look forward to. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that quarterly, quarterly billing is still on schedule. We, we did have a, a hiccup, however, we're not going to be able to move to Vadar. We're gonna have to stay with point, but we're still going to quarterly, and the reason we can't go to Vadar is because, obviously, you know, people, we, we can't get the training, so, um, I reached out to, to Vadar, they thought it was a wise decision, and hopefully, you know, mid-year or three quarters of the year, then we can make the migration to Vadar, but. Any questions?
Well, thank you Sharon, I appreciate your emails with the updates. It kinda shows where we're at with the budget. It kind of shows where we're at with the budget and it seems like, you know, things are tracking um where they're supposed to be, so.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else? If not, the next item is town administrator. Ratification of employment agreements, the police officers' union. So we had an executive session earlier. Um, and I need to have a motion to ratify the contract with the police union. So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, uh, do we have any discussion? Chuck, go ahead.
Um, just, this is more of an administrative matter. I don't think it requires, needs to be part of the motion. But I'd like to authorize uh, assuming a positive vote, I'd like to authorize David Williams to uh execute on behalf of each of the five members of the, of the select board.
Yeah, I think that, that could be part of the motion, I assume, right? Paul, was that okay if he modifies?
Fine.
Okay. So having a motion in a second or a roll call vote.
Can I just say something first?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
I think it's, it, it's an important milestone to recognize that we have this reached agreement with the police union. There have been a number of issues that had to be resolved. We took the time to work them through with a great deal of care. We listened to the uh uh union. We actually had them into a meeting with us. And I think this brings a uh a nice harmony to that department.
Yep, Chuck?
Yeah, I just would echo that, uh, that it would include uh Chief Bento and the union. I thought the negotiations were uh focused and effective. So kudos to, this, this was a, a, a good result and a good contract for the town.
Yes, thank you. All right, so I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Yan.
Aye.
Mr. Durentis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
And I vote aye, five zero, thank you. And the next item, town administrators' contract, uh, do I have a motion? What's up Eric?
Just a quick question on police contract. I want to clarify the, the vote. It wasn't just about the ratified, but did we, we authorize David to sign on behalf?
We authorized David to sign as well, yes.
Okay.
Um, the next is the contract with the town administrator. Uh, do I have?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Uh, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Yan.
Aye.
Mr. Durentis.
Aye, but I wanted to say congratulations to David and to the board to have a contract in place and to continue the work we're doing for the good of the town. Well done all the way around.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Another vote five zero, so both those contracts are ratified. Um, I don't think we can authorize David to sign the contract on both sides of the lines, so. Oh, I can arrange David. If you guys want to authorize me to sign for the board, I, I can, I can go by town hall and sign it. So moved. Okay.
Second.
Do, do we need to vote on that or?
Always safer.
Okay, so I got a motion for the chair to sign on behalf of the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, you made the motion Paul, you can't second your own motion.
We both made the motion at the same time.
And Paul made the motion and Mr. Yan. No, Mr. Yan?
I'll second it as long as you write really clearly and carefully.
I don't write clearly at all. I'm just gonna write C Y for you, so.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Yan.
Aye.
Mr. Durentis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
I tried to get my mother not to have me be a W and be last every time, but.
I just go by the, by the order your pictures are on my screen, to be quite honest. Okay, and I vote aye.
Aye, aye.
So five zero, okay. And do we have any select board reports, member reports? Go ahead Paul.
So we have an opportunity to help the uh, the businesses in our town. Because the attorney general's office has put together a fund and is offering on a first come, first served basis a, a uh amount of $50,000 per community for us to use to make loans to small businesses in the town. So if there are, we heard for, earlier at our meeting that the heritage was uh having a hard time. I'm sure uh CNL Frosties and maybe the dry cleaners and other businesses in town may be hurting. If we're interested in this, we ask, if we could have that amount of money, we decide to help out some of these businesses, hopefully that will stop somebody from going into bankruptcy or having to move out of town. We have a very small business group in town. It's not easy to do business in this town. And with all of the um requirements on social distancing and no gatherings and so on, these businesses have been hard hit. So why don't we do what we can to see if we can help them?
I, I absolutely agree with you Paul. I think that's a great idea. Uh, how do we go about doing that?
To authorize David to call the attorney general's office, see if we can get. It, it may be all gone because everybody's been, all municipalities have been running to do it, but it's worth a shot.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, do, I don't think we need to make a motion. I think David, if you could just look into that and let us know if we could still get that, that would be great.
Okay.
Any other select board reports? Seeing none, uh, we have an executive session. Um, the executive set, we will not be returning to executive session. Uh, we've already eliminated one of the executive session items because we had it before. But um the two remaining executive session items are item two. MGL chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection three to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, the chair so declares library. And item three is MGL chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and the chair so declares name of property withheld. The chair declares on both. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Waldron and a roll call vote. Mr. Yan.
Aye.
Mr. Durentis.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we are now in executive session and we will not be returning to open session. Thanks everybody who came tonight.